You want to start?
Yeah.
Director Grasha, this is John Pinkney. We're getting ready to start the meeting.
Can you turn that up? Alex. At the bottom of the line. Thank you. Is everybody ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Director Sewell?
Here.
Director Martin?
Here.
Director Grasha?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
President?
Right. Here. Just for the record, President Duncan has an excuse absence right now. He's got a family emergency. Okay. Employee recognition, we'll do that on Monday. Public input. Anybody like from the public? Okay. Number six, Resolution 2020-05, assessments, District Sewer Connection Financial Assistance Fund.
All right. You have been through this before. The difference this year is that, well, let me explain and give you background then, is that, you know, we go out with these assessment districts and we build an infrastructure in the public right away, but that doesn't account for some of the internal work that needs to be done on the property, which is the responsibility of the property owner. So we have historically, through the assessment districts, set up a loan program that we can use to help them come up with the funding that they need to connect to the sewer. The difference with this, of course, like Matt's going to say, is we're just going to leave this open for all assessment districts. But Matt, with that said, I'm going to let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. As the General Manager alluded to, we are doing a little housekeeping in anticipation of future grant funds and assessment district areas being constructed. Additional, four additional collection systems on the sewer side of the operation. So this resolution will set up an assessment district financial assistance fund. And as also as the General Manager mentioned in the past, these were assessment district specific, and we're proposing that we just have a generic, so to speak, assessment district financial assistance fund, so we don't have to do this every time an assessment district is formed. The amount of the fund is going to be established at $250,000. Past funds have been set up anywhere from $250,000 to $1 million. Both assessment district eleven and twelve combined, the highest amount we ever had outstanding was approximately $130,000. So $250,000 level should be adequate. And with that, I'll answer any questions again.
We haven't ever had any defaults from what I'm reading, right?
Correct.
That has been 1990. What was it?
Ninety-four, I believe, is the first one.
Yeah. So that's pretty good, and it helped out a lot of people, too. So I think it's a really good program. Okay, you got any questions? Russ? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry. Did you have any questions? I forgot you were there.
No. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, number eight, safety, public safety power shut-off. Presentation and discussion.
You missed one.
Did I? Water supply assessment, water supply verification. I checked it off too soon. For DHS 109 industrial park developments.
I'll let Danny give you kind of a profile. It's sort of a multipurpose development, and he'll give you some of the details. And requirement, as we say in here from Senate Bill 610, we have to do this for all facilities that we think are basically more than two, I think, five hundred, equivalent of 500 residential units, but this, so this would call like approximately 1,000 acres, 900, 2,000 acres.
Okay, Danny.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. So I, this WSA, WSC was required, as Arden mentioned, through Senate Bill SB 221 and 610. This project actually was bid out. TKE was the consultant that did the, that actually did the WSA. I have Steve Ledbetter here from TKE. He's going to provide more details. But just some backgrounds on this project. It's a total of, I believe, four, what was it? Well, it's called the DHS 109, because I guess it's 109 acres. But what it consists of is 5.4 acres of general light industrials, not just strictly cannabis, 17 and a half acres of cannabis cultivation, 6.6 acres of the power plant. Steve will talk more about that. 25 and 0.7 acres of landscaping, 5.7 acres of detention basin, along with 49.36 acres of streets and parks. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Steve Ledbetter. Thank you. I'll answer questions afterwards.
Hello, Steve.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the board. As Director Friend mentioned, this DHS 109 is an industrial park project. It's located between Atlantic and Little Morongo on the east and west side and 15th and 16th Avenue. The project, it includes about 17 and a half acres for cannabis cultivation, about 5.4 acres of light industrial, and a 6.6 acre power plant. That power plant is going to be sized for about 60 megawatts at full build-out. It's planned to be built into four different phases, not just the power plant, but both the cannabis and industrial square footage portions. And-
A regular power plant? I mean, is it solar power plant? It's just like what we got out there already, a power plant like that one?
We were not provided the details on the power plant, just the overall size of the facility and the total power output.
Okay.
But we can certainly track that down with the developer.
Just curious.
Okay. I don't believe it is green power, because there is a large water demand associated with that power plant. So again, I don't believe that it's going to be a green energy power plant, just off the top of my head. The remaining 110 acres is left for detention basin, streets, parking lots, and landscaping. There's a total of about 1.2 million square feet of industrial floor space. And SB 610 requires a water supply assessment for an industrial square footage above 650,000. So we're about double the minimum threshold that requires a WSA, so that's why we have to adhere to the Senate Bill 610. In addition, the project is subject to CEQA and a tentative map approval. So it's also subject to Senate Bill 221, which is the water supply verification. These two kind of go hand in hand. They're both in the same report that we've provided that should be in your agenda packet. The total demand for the project is about 1,800 acre feet per year of water. However, there's a recycled water component of what that 1,800, about 1,000 acre feet, will be recycled daily. So the net water demand to the system will only be about 810 acre feet per year. Both the cannabis cultivation portion and the power plants propose to recycle the water, any of the process water that's washed off, and then the cooling tower side for the power plant, that water will continually be recycled, which really cuts down on the total water demand for the project.
Yeah, just like the one that's out there already, so it probably is, I like it.
Yeah. I also want to mention that there, that there is some protection for the district regarding risk. We do have a section in there that says if there's any land use changes, any water planning assumption changes, so if the district incurs any changes with its water planning or water supplies, or if there's any changes with the developer on the land use side phasing, that we go back and we reevaluate this water supply assessment. In addition, if the project doesn't go to construction within five years, we also have that protection to reevaluate the plan. It's considered null and void. So I think that was worth mentioning. With that, I don't have anything else for you today unless there's any questions.
Questions, Hyden? Steve, do you have any questions? Steve, Director Grasha?
I can hear you. I have some questions. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And with that, Madam President, directors, we're asking for board acceptance of the, an approval of the water supply assessment and water verification study for the DHS 109 project. So if there's any other questions or stuff?
Okay, thank you, Danny. Now, I think you might stay there, right? Public safety power shut-off, is that you two? Hey.
Partially.
Okay.
Arden, you have anything you'd like to say, or?
No, no, no. I lead this up. We have a great presentation today. You're going to have fun. In fact, we're going to do both the parts.
So taking that lead, I'd also have today, last, well, let me start. The last month, there was discussion that PSPS or Power Safety Power Shut-off Program that Edison has was talked about, I believe, at a function or an aqua function that you went to. It was also mentioned by Madam President that you wanted to hear it and ask for an actual action, or an item for this discussion. So we, at that time, also attended a workshop. And we being Basal, the district Basal, and I, attended a workshop in Highland, in East Valley. It was put on by Edison. There was, the State Health Department was there. Other agencies were there, and the intent behind it was to talk to other water agencies on what they were doing to manage or what they're doing in preparation of PSPS. So the way this is done today is Basal was fortunate to get Christian Torres, who we refer to as our Edison rep for each everything that we deal with with Edison, but his title actually is a key account advisor. And his colleague is Luis Lara. He's a senior business analyst. And Luis is going to actually be giving a brief version of the presentation that he gives to many other organizations about what PSPS is and where it came from, why we're doing it. So at the back end of that, Basal Alzamor, he's talking about how PSPS affects this, our organization, and gives some details and background on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Luis Lara.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Hi, Luis. Welcome.
Hi. So good afternoon, Madam President, board members. Thank you for having us. So my name is Luis Lara. I'm with the outage communications team for the business customer division for Southern California Edison. Part of my, one of my primary roles is to get out to the communities and engage our customers, both commercial and residential customers, on what we're doing in the outage space. For me, that means including having conversations around the public safety power shut-off protocol, what that means for our customers, what are the impacts and downstream impacts therein, and even including some other types of outages. So we'll go ahead and we'll be going, and Dory and I had this great little skate going, so we'll go with that.
Been practicing that.
Yeah, we've been practicing for a while. Now, I do have the condensed version of this presentation today. If you need, if you need a longer version or more detail, let me know. I have another 7,000 slides. It's typically a 17-hour presentation, so it's not a problem. You let me know what level of detail you need to get board at, and I will bring that to you. Now, with Southern California Edison, our service territory encompasses approximately 50,000 square miles of service territory. Our boundaries range from Milton-San Diego up to the San Joaquin Valley, out from the Arizona-Nevada border, and out to the Pacific Ocean. So it's a very large service territory. Within that service territory, we have approximately 9,000, I'm sorry, 9 million acres that lie within what's called a high fire risk area. Okay? So Edison, we do have a better interest to develop a very well-rounded and more robust wildfire mitigation strategy. Speaking of wildfires, the notion of a wildfire being relegated to a few months out of the year is now no longer the case for us here in our state. Whether you attribute it to a cyclical, a weather change, or it's a climate change, or whatever it is, the fact is, the conditions in our state are such that we could experience a year-round wildfire threat. So within the space of that threat, whether it changes or not in the future, we don't know, but we need to address the impact that we have today. When you consider that the 10 of 20 most destructive fires that have impacted our state have occurred since 2015, we really need to rethink that notion of a wildfire threat occurring only, or being relegated to a few months out of the year. So it's a year-round wildfire threat. So we go over to the next slide. Now Edison's wildfire mitigation strategy, we've always had some form of strategy for many years. And years past, it's following under different protocols, different things that we do out in the field to address a fire threat or a live fire in the field. Today, and within the last couple of years, I would say, we've had to remove that wildfire kind of thought or process or protocol out of the middle of that kind of safety binder, bring it up to the front of the binder, adding more robust structure, and more importantly, a communication component to it, and begin sharing that initiative with our customers. Because if we are looking at that we are going to leverage this proactive shut-off our circuits more, more often in the near future, then we need to engage as early and as often as possible, so that you understand what are the implications of that to your operations, to your systems. So moving over to our next slide. Now, our strategy is based on three primary initiatives. Number one, bolstering our situational awareness capabilities. So what does that mean? We have 9 million acres that fall within a high fire risk area. So we need to know what is happening in those high fire risk areas in order for us to even begin to consider leveraging a proactive shut-off our customers. One way that we're going about that is we need to install, or we are installing, high-definition cameras throughout that high, high fire risk area. To date, we have close to about 200 cameras installed. By the end of 2020, we should have approximately 90% of visual coverage via those cameras in those high fire risk areas. Now, one of the capabilities that we have with these cameras is that if we're able to identify a potential threat in an area, or we see a live fire occurring, we can share that information with local agencies. We can, it's just a click of a, of the URL, if you will, and we can send it over to local agencies, letting them, hey, guys, this is what we're seeing. Do you see the same thing on your end? Can you use this to triangulate and make whatever plans you need to make? So we're able to share that, that bit of information. Another thing that we're doing out in the field is we're installing weather stations. To date, we have approximately over 400 weather stations installed. By the end of 2020, we should have well over 850 weather stations installed. These weather stations will give us very, very localized detail information. What is the wind speed? What is the moisture content? What is the humidity levels, et cetera, et cetera? All of this information is very critical for us to make a determination whether we even need to consider leveraging a protocol to de-energize customers. So all of that information is fed into one central location. On top of that, we have our operational practices. So just how we do business is changing in order for us to address this year-round fire threat or potential of it. A big component of that is our vegetation management. Vegetation management for Edison is a very, very large initiative. In years past, we used to cut back shrubbery and trees and et cetera about four feet from all circuitry. Moving forward, that clearance is growing from four feet to 12 feet. So that is a significant, that will significantly reduce the likelihood of a potential ignition point in the field due to shrubbery or some kind of tree making contact with already equipment. Now, one thing that we do, I do want to highlight typically is when I'm, have the opportunity to deliver these presentations is, one of the most frequent causes for interruptions for us is not necessarily some power failure because of equipment or whatever that is. It's typically what we call a fly-in into our equipment. And that's typically a branch or palm fronds flowing on into our equipment. We even have those EZ-ups, you know, when you go out to the park or the beach, you have those pop-up tents. Those fly up into our lines quite a bit. So by us having that ability to cut back shrubbery, we're able to reduce one of those factors significantly. Okay? Another component of that is hardening our grid. Now, that's a very, very large initiative that started, perhaps maybe about a year, year and a half ago now. And so what does that mean? So what that means is, throughout these high fire risk areas, we're looking to replace all of the old wooden poles with composite poles. These are more fire-resistant, fire-retarded poles. On top of that, we are replacing all of that bare wire. So if you're driving down the street and you see those poles, you know, for us, it's a beautiful thing, you know, it's ushering you into your next destination. So that wire that you see, it's actually bare wire. In these high fire risk areas, that's not a very good thing to have. So we're replacing all of that bare wire with a covered conductor. Essentially, it's the same wire, and it has a thick plastic sleeve over it. The reason for that is because in these high fire risk corridors, one thing that we've identified is that we have strong winds that come through these areas every year, like awkward. The winds do come through. When the winds do come through, they can force the lines to slap together. And if we have dry vegetation nearby, we have a spark that creates their end, well, then now we have, again, a potential for an ignition point out of the field. So replacing all of that bare wire with covered conductor will significantly reduce the likelihood of an ignition point in the field by approximately 60%. So that's a huge, huge initiative for us. That's typically when I'm looking to see a smiley face, like that's a huge risk reduction factor there. So we can move over to the next slide. Now, in those instances, when the conditions in the field do present an elevated threat to our communities, we will have to consider leveraging our public safety power shut-off protocol. Now, let's say you are at home, or you're driving to your office, and you hear that on the radio that there's a red flag warning issued for your area. I want to make it clear that just because a red flag warning is issued, that does not necessarily equal no power, that we are going to proactively shut off power to that community. Right? So for us, whenever we see a red flag warning, we focus our attention on that community. Including, if we have strong winds coming through a community, it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to shut off power to that community just because there are strong winds. So how do we go about making that decision process? In fact, let's go over to the next slide, please. Okay, so let's talk about this a little bit. So how do we make that decision process for even leveraging our PSPS protocol? So number one, all of the information that we collect from weather modeling, from our weather systems in the field, all of that is being collected and being monitored by our in-house meteorologists. So one thing that many customers do not know is that Edison does have approximately seven to 10 in-house meteorologists, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And their primary role is to identify threats coming through a specific region. In fact, we actually do have, right now, people activated at our EOC because of the ongoing showers. So our meteorologists are not just looking for dry weather and fire threats, but they're actually looking for those areas where we have strong showers that have come through, and we may need to leverage resources to support those communities in advance. So our meteorologists are continuously monitoring the conditions throughout our service territory. All that information is fed into one central location. From there, we have our fire scientists that provide their own expertise. These people are people that used to work with CAL FIRE, different local fire agencies. They've been involved in very large, large-scale fires. They've been there at those local IMTs. So we've asked, we've been able to get them onto our team because we need their expertise during these types of events. They will provide very, very key information. One of that, one of those considerations from these people is, what is the field moisture content in the field? So let's say that we're here in this area, and we have strong winds coming through, and they're hitting some, you know, some speeds that are just unprecedented, if you will. But we've had recent rain in that area. It could very well be that we may now have to leverage a PSPS protocol because the field moisture content exists, or it's high. So there's no need to leverage it at that point. So those are some of the things that we look at. Now, just to kind of jump off a little bit on the wind speeds, I get asked quite often, so at what point will you shut off my power? Okay? So one thing I tell my customers is, there are two numbers I need you to pay attention to, and that's the 32 mile per hour winds and 47 mile per hour wind gusts. Once we see those two numbers come through, we're going to focus our attention on that region. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to equal no power, but it means that we are going to focus attention in that area. From there, we need to look at the other recipe components, whether they exist, what is the field moisture content there? Has vegetation been cleared out in that particular area for some of those circuits, et cetera, et cetera? So all the other things start, you know, coming into play. But generally, the 32 and 47 mile per hour winds, that will focus our attention in that region. On top of that, we do have our own field personnel that are regularly monitoring conditions in the field. If we are activated because of a PSPS threat within a couple of days, we will send our patrolmen out into that local area to patrol, or pre-potrol that circuit, to identify the conditions at that time. Do they see a lot of fly-ins at that time? Do we need to advance certain things? Do they see broken crossarms, et cetera? They'll begin to conduct pre-petrolls. During an event, whenever that threat is active, our crews will remain in the field. They will provide live feedback to our EOC at all times. And they're out, you know, out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week until the threat has subsided. Once the threat has subsided, they will conduct a post-potrol of that circuit to ensure that it's, everything is okay, and everything should continue to go as it should be. From there, all of that information is fed into our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, where our IMT team considers all of the data that's flowing from different directions, from different sources. Now, when we're activated at the EOC, we also need to have awareness of which customers are going to be impacted. If we're going to shut off power to the Acosta circuit, for example, we need to know what customer types are there. What is, what is the demographic makeup of that, of those customers on the, on the Acosta circuit? How many of those customers are essential service providers, hospitals, dialysis centers, et cetera, law enforcement? How many of those customers are residential? How many of the customers are commercial? How many of those are water customers? Right? Waste water treatment plants? We need to know that level of detail. Including, and something that many of our customers may not know, is we need to know how many of those customers we have identified as critical medical care baseline customers. That's a very key component for us. We need to know of those, that customer makeup, of that demographic, which customers cannot be without power. So for us on our end, when we're activated, and if that Acosta circuit is within threat, we need to identify where those customers are located to find out whether we can logistically reduce the outage impact even further. Okay? So it's not just a simple someone is out in some basement in some bunker flipping a switch, and we just shut off power. There's more components that flow into that decision-making process, including understanding what is the makeup of that customer that is, or that circuit that it may be impacted by this event. Okay? We can move over to the next slide, please. Now, here I did mention about the field moisture content. I mentioned about the wind speeds, et cetera, so we can move on to the next slide. I just included it earlier. Now, on this slide, I typically spend quite a bit of time, because this is where I take my customers through what a week would look like of us having to leverage a PSPS protocol. So at about seven, or 47 days out, our meteorologists are always monitoring what are the conditions out in the field. If they identify a potential threat, they will sound the alarm. At about three days out, if weather modeling continues to show that, and the environment reflects what we are seeing, then we will activate our team to the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. At that time, at about three days out, that's when we begin to engage local agencies, local governments, including our water districts. Now, about a year and a half ago, our water districts weren't being notified about, at this point, about three days out. We had a couple of workshops with those water customers at that time, and they let us know, hey, guys, I understand your plan, but this is not good for us. Because sometimes, when you notify the city, they forget to notify us, or they forget to forward that email to us. So how can you get us in the mix a lot earlier? So at the same time that we're notifying local county OEM, local cities, we are also notifying all of our water district customers now. Okay? Which reminds me, we need to ensure that we have your updated contact information at all times. We understand that for many of our customers, there's a lot of ebb and flow of contacts, or people move to a different area, or different department, or some people retire. We need to make sure that we have your updated contact information at all times, so that in case of an emergency, we can reach out to you, we can engage you as early as possible. At about two days out, and about one day out, we are going to send out notifications to all of those customers that we've identified on that potential threat. Okay? Let's say, we're using the Acosta circuit. All customers on the Acosta circuit, we're going to send notifications at about two days and one day out. Okay? We monitor that, let them know that there's a potential that we're going to shut off power to their homes and to their businesses. Now, let me take one step back. At three days out, our initial contact with you, there was one key thing that I need you guys to understand, and if you don't receive it from Edison at that time, you need to request it. It's called the period of concern. So what that means is, at that three-day mark, we're going to identify when that period of concern is likely to occur, that time when we are most likely to shut off power to your operations. If you don't have that period of concern, let's say that that period of concern is Monday from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you don't, if we don't provide that to you as early as possible, you may not have sufficient time to move resources or reorganize your resources as needed. Okay? Or top off reservoirs, whatever you need to do. So it's very important that you have that period of concern from us as early as possible. Okay? Now, let's say that we get to that period of concern period, and we end up shutting off power because the conditions warrant it. The most common question I receive is, okay, I get it, you shut off because of safety. How soon are you going to get power back on? Right? So as a rule of thumb, if you're shut off during that period of concern, a good rule of thumb is to think, period of concern plus 24 hours. So let's say your period of concern is Monday between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. Add 24 hours to that, we should have it restored by then. to that, we should have it restored by then. That's assuming that when we conduct a post-patrol, we don't see any trees that have come down on power lines, we don't have any broken arms or anything like that that we have to take care of first. Okay? So once we shut off power, the most important thing for us to do is patrol that circuit before we can re-energize. We don't want to re-energize that circuit and then introduce a threat out in the field. Okay? Now, one of the biggest components of this is communication. Now, one thing that we want to push forward this year a lot is, we don't want it to be a one-way street of communication, where you're only receiving information from Edison. If, when we're activated and we begin engaging you and you have questions or you're unsure of something, or we're just sending you a lot of notifications, a lot of information, and it's unclear, please reach out to us. It is very important for us that we grow that partnership and ensure that ebb and flow of information, communication with you, particularly during these type of emergency events. Okay? So your point of contact is Christian Torres. You guys have a great resource in him. He's really, really good at what he does, and feel free to call him at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. He's well okay with that. In fact, I will hold off your calls until 2:30 in the morning, and he should be okay. Okay? Now, with Christian, as an additional resource, he has our team. When we're activated during these types of events, we are activated as well, 24 hours a day, so he can reach out to us for information at all given times. Okay? So again, I do want to underscore that as much as I can, we need to ensure an ebb and flow of information, not just one-way, but two-way. Okay? Any questions on that yet?
Do we have your phone number that we're supposed to call?
Yes. Is Christian's phone number exactly?
Yeah, you got Christian's phone number.
It's his personal number, I'll give it to you, don't worry.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Brett?
You started listing the categories of first notification. You listed medical facilities, you listed police, fire, you know, personnel on that list. Were the water districts in that first group or a secondary group? The reason I say that is because some of the problems have been with the power shut-off is the inability to get water pumped to locations. And I would think, as long as, as long as we're fighting fire with water, I would think that that would be something that would be, we'd be in that initial category. So where do we fit in that?
Sure. So when this whole process started about two years ago, we had identified the essential service providers as those customers that provided some safety service component to it, right? Since then, things have been revamped. So water districts weren't exactly a part of that. And it was probably just maybe an inadvertent failure on different agencies to qualify the importance of water districts at that time. Or maybe it's just, you know, we're still so getting into it that we weren't thinking through it as well as we should, until we started hearing from our water districts directly. "Hey, knuckleheads, FYI, you can't do X without, you know, you can't do this without that." So we need to think about that. So internally, Edison started revamping just how we do business, how we operate in that, on that front. So that's why we started engaging our water districts a lot earlier. At the same time that we're engaging water, local city, local government, all those officials, we're engaging our water districts as well.
So typically, how much of a notice would we have before we would have to shut off, do you think?
Great question. So, in an ideal timeline, we will have the luxury of time to send you, you know, engage with you three days out, two, one, and even that day. We started implementing what's called an imminent shutdown notification. And that notification says, you know, paraphrasing customer, "We're looking to shut off power in your area in the next one to four hours." Sometimes the conditions in the field do not allow us that luxury of time. They just don't. So we've had occasions where we were activated at the EOC and the morning weather report says, "Hey, we're good to go," but then the afternoon report at around 1600 says, "Hey, this has gone from bad to worse. We need to take action now." So things can change very quickly and it's very much dependent on the conditions in the field. So which reminds, which kind of brings me back to my point, it's very important for us that we have this open kind of flow of information, or communication, excuse me. So that if you receive an email from us saying, or if Christian calls you guys and says, "Hey guys, it looks like your period of concern is on Monday," and let's say that afternoon that he calls you, you want more information, is this, are we still on track? Does that look like that period of concern will be advanced, will it be delayed? What are we looking at? Because on our end, just for our operations, I need to know whether I top off our reservoirs, whether we need to roll out the generators to that pump or this area. So that continuous ebb and flow of communication is what is necessary. Right? So that you're not just waiting on, we receive one notification, receive a second notification from Edison. Did I help muddy that even further?
Yeah, we deal with emergencies.
Sure.
We're pretty much up on it, so I understand, and I understand your dilemma.
Yeah, it is a dilemma. And so I know up north and where some of the big fires have happened, some of them were the water districts. Also, that it's the duration of the, the shut-off, and people then are left without water for several days at a time. Any, I guess there's not much you can help on that? I mean, you have to leave it off, you gotta leave it off, is that it? So generators would probably be what water districts need to make sure they have?
So, on, on the conditions that have happened up in our, for our northern communities, I believe it's really hard for me to speak to that, and that's a whole different IOU, and I don't want to get fired my first time out here. Don't get me in trouble, please.
That was some of their comments, okay.
Don't get me in trouble my first time out here, but...
The duration, okay, let's stay down here, the duration.
Yeah, so the durations are different, right? So the way that Edison approaches the proactive shutting off of circuits is very different than other sister utilities. As opposed to shutting off larger swaths of customers all at once, we try to be very strategic in how we de-energize customers. We want to understand what is the downstream effect of us shutting off this one circuit or a section of that circuit. Right? So if we make a decision that we need to shut off this area, we need to start engaging those customers that are going to be shut off, as, as well as the local county OEM. Right? So that they know that there may be need for additional resources allocated to that area, to that region. So for us, it's not uncommon if we see a, now mind you, this, this type of protocol is leveraged when there is no fire out in the field, right? There's, that activity's not there.
Fire.
Right, we're looking to avoid that. So if we shut off power, right now we're looking at 24 hours, you know, plus, when we should have it restored. So we're asking customers to prepare for that type of timeframe. If there's a downed power line, well then naturally that's going to extend their restoration efforts. Okay? And, but we'll definitely be engaging you during that time. During a fire, we have had customers that have, that were off for several days, and that's because of the level of damage that the fire inflicted on our equipment. In those instances, we were able to work with the local county resources and different agencies to bring additional support, to support like our water districts and different organizations that provide that level of service to customers. One thing I do always want to kind of champion is our CAL-WARNE organizations. I don't know if you guys are a membership with CAL-WARNE? I'm assuming yes, okay. I'm seeing nods of support.
Yes, okay.
That is a great, great resource in time of emergencies, where you can leverage CAL-WARNE and they can leverage other local utilities to bring in additional support when necessary, including field, generation, and just the amount of things that they can support is just unbelievable. They're great.
Okay, so in other words, we need, we need generators, possibly?
Well, we have to, but, but just listen a little bit, Bassam's going to get up right there after this.
Okay, fine, stay where we're at, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Steve, do you have any questions there?
I don't, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Ivan?
No, no, thank you.
Nope, we're fine, thank you.
Okay, so again, this is just a very high-level kind of overview of this protocol. If you need more information, or you need me to come on and have a more specific conversation with your staff or your team on the actual locations of your, of your system and how it's located and plotted, and you need GIS mapping, let us know, we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know this is really just towards the fires, but would you be our contact as well as far as like earthquake, reacting to a major earthquake and things like that that we could also talk to you about?
So, believe it or not, even during earthquake events like the one we had in Bishop, our team was activated at that time to run support. So, yeah, if there's anything to do with power interruptions, we are your favorite people at that time now.
Second or third, anyway.
Yes, yeah, right, right, second, at least an easy 47th place.
And where are you, where are you stationed at?
So, my home office is out of Rancho Cucamonga, but I am rarely there. So I go wherever the need takes me.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Bassam, are you up now?
I am.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board. I want to thank Luis Lara and Christian Torres for coming out today and giving us this presentation. He was just as funny at the last one as he was today too, so... So since the implementation of this PSPS program that Edison has come out with, we've had numerous emails and phone calls and communication back and forth between us and Edison, dozens. Out of all of the communications that we've had, very little, if any, other than one, actually turned into a power shut-off for us. We were affected back in October of 2019, actually it was October 30th of 2019. We did have a event that caused a power outage for us in the IDE area, our most westernly water system. We, we were affected, the, the shut-off was approximately six to eight hours. We lost power because of a PSPS event. So what did we do? As, you know, it was like, like Luis was saying, they started communicating with us around three days out. Christian has been excellent with us in the communication. I haven't called him at 2:00 in the morning yet, but I think the last time him and I were on the phone it was like 9:30 or 10:00 at night, and it was on that day where we were going back and forth like, "What's happening with my system? I need, I need power back up." So, he is, he's been wonderful, great asset to us, and a resource to, to the district. So, we had this power shut-off and we got notified a couple of days in advance. We were able to take precautions ahead of time. We were able to keep our reservoirs full, so, you know, we, we normally operate in this level, we kept it to where our reservoir levels were full in anticipation that we might get shut off. Then the day happened and, and they shut off our power. Luckily, our reservoir levels were high enough that we were able to maintain pressure in the system, no one was affected, no one, we, we did not suffer any issues in the system because of the power shut-off. But as a precaution, we mobilized a generator out to that site just in case. We ended up running it later on in the evening for a couple hours just to keep that water level in that tank full, just in case it prolonged, the, the shut-off prolonged longer than what we were anticipating. Luckily, it was only six to eight hours and we were back in power and everything was good after that. So, we have been affected by it and we were able to respond, and like I said, there was no disruption to any type of service or anything like that. So over the past couple months, what we have been doing, actually I take this back, it goes even back almost to last June or July, and we had an issue that wasn't necessarily related to the PSPS program that Edison has. We had an issue at one of our sites where we had a transformer that blew out, caused one of our booster pumps to go out. Long story short, it was, had to do with the terrace boosters going out, caught on fire, Edison Power had a glitch in it, caused some major issues for us where we had to figure out how to move water around. In the meantime, we lost power to that site, so we had to mobilize our generators. So this is something that has been going on for us for a very long time. This isn't something new for us. We currently have generators, standby generators, that are portable generators, and we also have standby generators that are fixed base generators that are for a facility and they don't move. Horton Wastewater Treatment Plant being one of them, the Dos Palmas Lift Station being another one, and this facility here. We have generators that are not portable, they're fixed units. Power goes off, it's got an automatic transfer switch that will automatically kick on, and power goes off and then power comes right back on once the, once the transfer switch senses that it lost power. So, some key essential locations, you know, wastewater plant, we can't have, not have power. I can't stop sewage from flowing. So we got to be able to have that backup there just in case. Likewise, this facility here, we, this is our main hub we have to operate, so we have a backup generator here. So what are our next steps? What we've been doing is we've been evaluating our system. Where do we need to look at? What are our essential spots? What are our hotspots? Where I, if I lost power, this whole, our whole, let's say DHS went black, what do I need to do to keep water flowing in this town and not affect public health or any disruption in the system? So I've tasked my staff to look at what our essential sites are. Where do we need to go? What do we need to do? Do we need to have some more fixed generators set at some of these sites just in case? Are we looking at portable generators? That's something that we're all, we're doing right now is an evaluation, just to look at our overall water system, see what do we need. Along with that is going to come into play, you know, our emergency response plan, our tabletop exercises, keeping up on that and making sure that if an emergency was to happen, how do we react? What do we need to do? So all those things come into play. Also, we're looking at, there's a American, the American Water Infrastructure Act. Part of that, which is a, it's a, come down here, Danny.
It needs to be like the vulnerability assessment.
So it, it includes a vulnerability assessment or resilience assessment of our water district. That is a mandated, it's a state mandated document that has to be done for us by next June, June of 20, June 30th of 2021. Part of that is, is like, we just said, the resiliency plan or vulnerability. It used to be called the vulnerability plan, now it's called the resiliency plan.
I think it's the water resiliency portfolio.
Yeah.
Part of...
Yeah. So looking at how vulnerable are we? What do we need to do? So all of these are coming into play right now along with this PSPS program. We're looking at possible grants for, for future generators and any other items that we need to bring in that are going to play a part with that. So, that's all I have available for any questions.
Oh wow, it's really good, thank you for all of that. I, you know, I kind of knew what was out there, but thank you for putting it all together. Ivan, any questions?
It's a big one, just, I'm sure each reservoir is going to be a little different, but say in a best-case scenario, all our reservoirs are full, what's kind of our timeline of how long we could last without power?
You know, it's going to vary in different areas, different reservoirs, the consumption on those tanks is, is different. I can't tell you that I can last for four hours or I can last for two days, but on average, I think we're, we're right around, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, around a day worth of storage before we start to, it's a loaded question.
Yeah.
Depends, if this was a, sorry, come to the podium, come to the mic. Summertime, wintertime?
Yeah. Whether the people know or not, just because of water.
Yeah, depends on what we implement. If we, if we know that something is imminent, it's going to stay, we can have a rational program, but if we were just to go ahead and go under normal use, say, in, say, average, around now, it's, it's 22.5 million gallons of storage and it could be roughly up to two days. So, depends on how, it depends on, depends on where we want to stop it as well, because there's also, like, a loaded question, where is, is that empty or is that maintaining fire protection? But there's a lot of things that go there. Let us look into that and we'll bring that information back to you next month.
Sorry for the question.
No, it's a great question.
Steve on the phone there, do you have any questions?
I, no questions, ma'am.
Yeah, I have one. One of the presentations I went to that had, had real problems with, with during, during fire of, of being able to pump water to where it was needed. And one of the recommendations that was made, that was put into effect in this one community were what they called hell hydrants, which were basically oversized bathtubs that could be filled relatively quickly so that the helicopters that were fighting the fire could drop down and, and I think that, any, any, that was in a desert community like we are. And I was just wondering if anybody had addressed that issue and whether or not that was something that we looked at or not.
I personally haven't heard of that, but it's something we can look into and can, we can get back to you on, absolutely.
Okay.
We've had those actually implemented in our area district, on our western portion here, in our Paint Hills section, where they stepped that up, connect to a fire hydrant and use that for helicopter drops.
Okay.
So the 2006 fire was the last fire that that happened in.
Thank you.
I learned something new today too.
Awesome. I'm glad we're ahead of the...
We're charging you, staff, it's good to do.
That's great.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hassan.
Okay, so now we'll move on to number nine, Mission Springs Water District's West Valley Water Reclamation Facility.
Um, we, we took part of this out of the general manager's report and we do have a number of different things to report. Danny's gonna share with you what our progress has been with that process.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. So there's, there's probably something you recognize, which is that cover page, I took a page out of Victoria's book as far as her update that she does in her public relations. And as Arden mentioned, we typically each month, I have whatever we report on in the written portion of the GM report. So what we've done is extracted that, as Arden has stated, and put this in here. So just to help connect the dots on some of the things that we're talking about, last month and a couple of months prior to that, we talked about the 90% plans. And I am happy to say that we did, after a internal consolidation of notes and comments, we're able to get those out to the design engineer. And the 100% design is, is gonna be the next step for us. And as I mentioned, there's been over 1,400 pages of specifications and contract documents. That's a large binder of information. The plan set itself is 220 pages roughly. And 60%, which I reported on many months ago, that it's a critical timeframe in trying to plan check process, because if you don't capture all the changes at that time, that could cause delays in future. And one of the things that happened is we received about 10% shy of the pages that we needed to, and if not more, at the 60%. So that's also caused additional time in the 90% review, which, which made it also that much more important for us to make sure we reviewed everything. So that's a great part about the actual, part, that part, I'm glad it's off our plates, the staff along with TKE as the program manager, Steve Labetter has done that. And that's, it's a huge milestone for us, working our way towards 100% plans. I also reported last month the success of a visit that we had with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and Paula and her staff, and it was to bring the light to our waste discharge requirements and how long the process was. As Arden mentioned last month, two days, roughly two days after we had that meeting, we actually received that letter. It was, I didn't have that, it was too soon to include it in that package. But what I've also included in this particular report is, the very back end is our response letter. So if you, you can take a look at that, it's three pages. It starts off with the conference, the six conference, the questions that they have and then our responses to that. So what I left out of it is other items that we've reported to the board in previous meetings as far as the modeling reports that were required in the front end. They wanted those reiterated to them, so I decided to include that now, so I can, I can provide that if you guys would like to see that. So that is a good thing. The board, regional board has said that in the next three months, we should hopefully see a response and that's gonna keep us in line with that permitting process. The other big thing is the, we still have staff and primarily TKE monitoring the SRF grant application process. There are, again, much like we did with the regional board, we are working with senior staff at the state board and working with the general manager scheduled to actually make a trip up to Sacramento and visit, hopefully with staff at first and then go from there to see what's needed. But we're expecting it to happen over the course of the next month.
It's time to go to Sacramento.
So along with the past reports, let me ask, I'm sorry, board, do you have this, do you have what's in front of you, the actual, the written portion? So we've been working on a 10 parcel map, and what we're doing is we're taking the 37 parcels that make up the regional plant. And we know that well 33 has been down there on one of those parcels. We also know that we built the solar project north of well 32, so well 33, really, correction. So the 90.37 acres approximately consists of 37 parcels. And it's hard to tell with the graphic that I've embedded into the report, but there is a green, a blue, and a red. I just wanted to go ahead and show you that, so they identified as the parcels. The green is parcel one, and that's what's gonna be the, what was gonna be our regional plant, 57.89 acres. The little blue parcel, which is two and a half acres, is our existing well 33. And then the solar project is the balance of that, making up 29.98 acres, so almost 30 acres. The, if you can see that in the graphic, which you have, you see like a sliver, which is a utility easement. And that utility easement, if, there's many reasons why we're doing what we're doing as far as doing a parcel map and consolidating these lots into three actual parcels. Otherwise, we'd be doing individual vacation documents to vacate the utility easements that are going across our properties, because they're never gonna run other utilities across those properties, it's gonna be our plant, of course, and our solar field. So this is the most efficient and effective method to do so. And our consultant TKE has actually worked through that process, has submitted that to the Desert City of Denver Hot Springs for the application process. So that's moving forward. Another key element of this project is our, our conveyance line. It's where we're gonna take the current Dos Palmas water, uh, lift station, I'm sorry, and rather than lift and force main that, that flow to the Horton plant as it exists today, we're gonna take that flow to the west, and that's gonna be the primary sea flow, roughly under 99,000 gallons a day today. That's gonna be scalped from the Horton plant, but that'll be the sea flow for the new regional location.
Gravity, gravity flow?
No. No, that's gonna be, so.
But we have another option, but that would take longer, so we had to go with the force, with the force main.
Are we going Dylan, Little Moranga? We're not going Diagon?
So correct, so we are gonna go, so we are, so we're essentially taking the flow and redirecting it, doing some pump modifications at the plant or at the lift station, and then we're taking that flow with a double barrel force main, so basically two parallel pipes rather than one large. There's redundancy there as well, there's also a concern for that long of a span going to such a critical facility in our, in our district. So we're gonna take that flow somewhere, there's a couple of different plans, but right now we're gonna take that flow all the way to a van hole where we gravity feed at Little Moranga and Dylan, all the way to head, or in this case, not the headworks, but the pump station, inlet pump station where it comes in. It's critical, that design project is coming in with the timing of the construction or the design of the plant, because the pipe that comes in has to basically also dictate the actual depth somewhat of the, if not control of the pump station, where the water comes in and pumps through the headworks and pumps through the actual processes of the actual plant. So that project is moving great up until recent.
But also, you need to understand, by doing that, we also are giving us some more capacity at the Horton plant and providing us with some flexibility for our three trains that we have and, and maintenance issues that we would encounter.
Correct, thank you. So as we come down Little Moranga with our pipeline, we encounter issues with right-of-way or in this case, utility easement. So what was anticipated as, as an actual existing is not, and part of that area that we're dealing with is the multi-species habitat to the east side of the road. So where we have to, either we have an opportunity to come down straight without any issues or, or we have to come and, and design it to where we have to zigzag it. So we've been working with the multi-species habitat folks, as we've reported in prior meetings. Unfortunately, there's a bunch of covenant language that does not allow them, they say, but now the truth is that it's a long process. That process could be as long as nine months, if not longer. And we're going an alternative route, we're hoping that works better, and we're partnering with the City of Denver Hot Springs, as they are the land use agency there. And we're looking at, hopefully doing a road easement, basically dedication. And there's three parcels on the west side, just south of, just south of, south of Dylan Road, that will hopefully be a little easier than dealing with that process. And the idea of partnering with the city is they're for it. They'll send the letter, the information on their letterhead on our behalf. We'll go ahead and put the information, draw the plots up and everything that's required to do that. Hopefully, working with just three property owners with vacant parcels today is gonna be a little bit easier. That's also something that's gonna be advantageous to the, to the city as far as what their street plan and their shows today, that's an arterial that they would eventually wanna take ultimately at one time to 110 feet of right-of-way. It's being contemplated somewhere between 90 to 110, but that has, that does have advantage to the city, so that's why we've worked with them, we're partnering with them. So we're, so it's just a, just a, yes, a pause button? I've heard Brian say that before, yesterday in that meeting. So it's actually a better way than delay, we hit the pause button while we work with another agency to see if we can get this done more effectively. And once that happens, we'll come back to the design process on that.
Can you maybe give us a, a map of, just show us where it's gonna go?
Absolutely. So along with what we've got here this month, and I mentioned last month, I, I plan to bring more graphics and, and more information so that you guys can connect better, put things on the screen, so we're not squinting at some, something here, 'cause I'm squinting myself, I can't even see, that's why I put colors to it. But certainly, I, I don't, would you like to, as soon as Monday, otherwise I can do that on the next meeting with the next report.
If it's not in a hurry, if you're not, if it's not anything that's gonna be, you know, done quickly, you can wait, whatever's convenient.
We've got graphics that we can easily put together. What I'll do is, is I'll work with Dory, is the best, what is it, upload it to the drop box?
Just, just, where it goes?
Not a problem. I just, I just don't know the, the mechanism, how are we gonna get it to the board? So what's, what would be the most, certainly, I'll take care of that, I'll work with the general manager.
Okay, then no hurry, just whenever it's convenient.
Send it to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have. If you want to see his questions, let me ask the answer.
No, but good luck and hopefully this will be a quicker way. And how long do you think this particular way is gonna take?
I.
You have an estimate at all?
Don't have an esti, I don't recall an estimate.
I can speak on that. It really depends on the responsiveness of the property owners with the City of Denver Hot Springs. But it is nice to have kind of the way to the city behind us, asking for not just a utility easement as Mission Springs, but also for a right-of-way easement that will potentially benefit those property owners, should those properties ever develop, they would need to dedicate that right-of-way anyway. So we hope it's more of a win-win proposal with both the water district and the city proposing that. It will go out on city letterhead, so, and the city's really gonna take the lead on that.
Great, okay.
You know, and, and also, it isn't, you know, the, the nice thing about having these two routes, you know, we're going to do this route first. Actually, if we had a gravity feed and we had to do work on it, it would be nice to have an alternate route down there, because sooner or later, we're gonna be sending all the flows down there.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I know easements can be a real challenge sometimes, so. Okay, thank you, Adam. Steve on the phone, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
One thing I'd like to note, that the conveyance line design is already at 90%. It's gonna be a relatively quick process to get it to 100. It also has a much shorter construction duration as opposed to the treatment plant. So we know that we have a little bit of leniency with the schedule for that project to let the city take that, take on that right-of-way process for a few months, see what happens. And then we still have the other option to, as the district seek out the specific corner easement, we need to get the pipeline across that property and, and move that along ourselves. So we have options.
Great. Moving along. Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll launch to item number 10, Indian Avenue Sewer Collection System Financing District.
I don't think we have anything to report.
No updates, no update this time, okay?
Nothing.
AMI project update.
I'll let Matt give us the status of that. Usually, you, you have some of the report in my GM report, but there's always progress between the time we get that posted for you and the time we're ready to meet.
Thank you, good afternoon again. As general manager mentioned, some of the data is in the general manager's report, but as of Tuesday of this week, there were a little over 4,700 water meters installed as part of this project, which puts us about 37%. So we're approaching the halfway mark. We are still on schedule for a June completion of the project. They have ramped up their labor to 12 installers, so they have, I believe, three or four teams out there for a total of 12. They, they are not installing today, they're starting to install subsurface, so obviously on rainy days they're not working. But also, another aspect of the project that is proceeding is the collectors. There are eight collectors that are going to be, that have been installed on Mission Springs facilities, and those are basically about 50-foot poles with antennas on top of them. And these are our collectors for all the data, once the system is completely installed. But those eight collectors have been installed and the project is proceeding as planned. So I can answer any questions.
Any phone calls on any of this stuff going on out there? Well, we don't, meter replacements and stuff, people, they calling in at all?
Yes, it, it's a constant flow of questions. As we go into neighborhoods, we post the door handlers that will be there within 48 hours, and that usually prompts a few calls, you know, having, people having our staff explain the door handlers to them. Once the installation occurs, sometimes there are issues, leaks that we have to go back and deal with, and so on and so forth. So it's a, it's a constant flow of communication that's coming in, and our staff is doing a great job of dealing with that, as well as assistance with, or from the Ferguson call center that they provide.
Okay, great, thanks. Ivan?
I know I've had a couple, and I was wondering if it's been a large amount of high bill inquiries after they've got the new meter, as far as people calling in?
I don't know that I would say a large amount, there are some, and that is a trend. As these meters have gone out over the last X amount of years, they do lose their accuracy, and these new meters are going to be more accurate, generally speaking. And so there is a chance that customers will, will want, once the new, once the new meter is installed. But with the new meter comes new data capabilities, and it's been our experience so far that once we get the call and go out and show them the data and show them their water use, which is broken down into every 15 seconds, they usually see it right away and agree with it, and they don't necessarily like it, but are willing to, to move on.
I think just to build a bit on what Matt is saying is that if you understand the physics behind meters, you'll understand that as they get older, they read less, they do not read more. So all of these, when we change, excuse me, when we do change a meter out, the meter's more accurate and it means that it is really going to read more. So it's to the benefit of the customer, you know.
Well, I think one of the benefits of these new meters is not only is it a radio read, but it also has that physical dial in there.
Correct, that is correct, yes.
So there's multiple ways for us to confirm it's working, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Russ, any questions?
Nope.
Steve, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda, anybody have any comments? Would you like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Steve, wanna pull anything?
No, our big finance.
Russ?
Nope.
Okay.
Briefly, the seven months ended January 31st, 2020, is the financial report that you have in front of you. Trends are continuing as expected, both seasonally and as compared to budget. Operating revenue is tracking about 6% ahead of budget, which is in line with the water production statistics that are also in your packet. Cash position of the district continues to be strong, we're at almost $35 million. Debt service ratio and investment returns are also very consistent for the first seven months of the year. January compared to last year was a very dry month, but March has proven to be a little wetter, so we'll see these trends continue as we mirror into the seven months. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Steve, questions?
No, ma'am, no questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Public Affairs Report.
Good afternoon, President Wright, members of the board. Before we launch into the Public Affairs Report, as promised at our board workshop, I did want to touch upon first what we were doing with our external and internal measures regarding the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. So, as you'll see here on your screen, this is our, and Director Rasha, we're on the MSWD.org homepage, just for your reference to see what everyone else is looking at. So as you'll see here, right on our homepage, we have put a, a message up there, and it's, you know, first thing that you'll see. It's essentially stating that the coronavirus outbreak does not affect our water supply and that MSWD is going to continue to provide safe and reliable water, and we're being proactive to assure that our quality water and wastewater services will continue if and when. if and when it would make its way to our area. And we just remind everybody that it is a respiratory illness like the flu, spread person to person. It's not waterborne. So Dory, if you go ahead and click Read More, this will bring you to a landing page that we have on our website. Same thing, reiterate some of the information that I was just referring to about the coronavirus. You can access this webpage, as mentioned, from the homepage, or you could go straight to MSWD.org/coronavirus. And on here, as you'll see, you have, I think it's the fourth, fifth bullet point, please review Frequently Asked Questions. So if you click on the Frequently Asked Questions link, we have four main questions that are addressed. Number one, can Mission Springs Water District continue providing water if COVID-19 causes widespread community illness? So we address that question that, you know, yes, Mission Springs can continue operating. And we just, you know, talk about our system here. We maintain 13 potable groundwater wells throughout the water service area, and we have approximately 390 miles of pipeline and numerous reservoirs. We kind of, you know, go into a little bit more detail there. Our second question, should I stockpile bottled water as a result of COVID-19? While we encourage everyone to be mindful about any emergency and have their own emergency preparedness plan, our community's drinking water supply is not impacted by the coronavirus. We meet and/or surpass federal's Safe Drinking Water Act standards. And so you can drink your water straight from the tap, as mentioned, it's not waterborne, and it doesn't affect our water supply. The third question on that sheet, are there any risks of COVID-19 being transmitted through drinking water supplies? And to date, according to health officials, there is no indication that transmission can occur through drinking water supplies. We go into talking about how our water supply is treated through chlorination, which is a state regulation through the Department of Water Resources. And as we mentioned, just kind of goes into a little bit more detail about the water treatment process. Finally, our fourth question, what steps is Mission Springs Water District taking to ensure COVID-19 does not interrupt our water systems operations? So just talking a little bit about our emergency response plan and different contingencies that, you know, the district, and as we just kind of were talking about, we are prepared. We have an emergency response plan, and we have been trained, have had different exercises, training, and a tabletop exercise actually forthcoming. So those are the four questions right here. This is a frequently asked question. What was also issued today was a press release. It should be under transparency, but if not, let's see here, transparency, a message about your water, very first one, Dory. Okay, interesting. Well, the press release is under our press release section on the website, but that press release has also been issued to local news outlets. We've also posted it on our Facebook and Nextdoor and shared it within the respective community groups as well. And so the statement, it's more or less reiterating a lot of what I've just mentioned, but also redirects individuals to go to our website, check out our Frequently Asked Questions, but essentially reassuring individuals that as a water district, we are on top of this in terms of our emergency response preparedness plan, but also reassuring the community and the public at large that the coronavirus does not impact our water supply. We are ready for any contingencies, but for now, drinking from your tap is more than safe. And as you know, we have award-winning water right here accessible to us. So that is externally, that's been our efforts that we've done since we last kind of communicated yesterday and earlier this week. Are there any questions on the external message?
While you're thinking of the questions, and we'll adjust this, add what we need to as information becomes available on this virus.
We're going to put a little work maybe on our bill and maybe refer to this, or just say just a little, a couple sentences to let them know that they can, that the...
We have talked about that.
Yeah, have you talked about that one?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, and as the, I did email out the press release to you, to the members of the board earlier this afternoon, but in case you hadn't had a chance to read it, we do state that we are monitoring. It's a rapidly evolving situation, but any vital and important information will be shared and released to the public as it's received and, you know, as it's pertinent to the water supply. So we want to make sure that we continue to be transparent and that the community is fully aware from a water point of view and even a wastewater services we provide vote that it doesn't interrupt our services, and we're still, you know, committed to professionally delivering that to our customers.
Russ?
Yeah, some people react very negatively towards chlorine in the water. And I'm just letting you know, and I'm probably preaching to the choir, you probably already know this, that you're going to get some responses about, and be prepared to explain to them the small dosage that we use to handle that. It shouldn't affect the taste or anything like that. They really react negatively to chlorine.
And funny you should mention that, Director Martin. I was paying attention during the board meeting, but if you did see me on my phone, I was responding to some Facebook questions that have already emerged, and some of them were related to the chlorination process. And Basam Al-Samar, yeah, we were kind of going back and forth, talking about, you know, water quality and assuring that as it is a state regulation, all water agencies within the state are required to do that as a preventative disinfectant measure. So we've, you know, I mean, yes, small doses, as you mentioned, but we included that within the press release because if you go to the CDC's website, Center for Disease Control, it did mention that at this time, the chlorination process that water agencies use, we believe that that shows the virus' impact within water or wastewater supply.
And let me add a couple things. A, we've been chlorinating for 50 years all over the nation.
Not here.
B, no, but when we did get ordered to chlorinate...
We had 10,000 connections we had.
We spent money, a lot of money, on consulting services to help us in determine how we can best inject that disinfectant into the system so that we do not have to maintain high levels of chlorine throughout the system. So we, it's not perfect, and we have our, you know, but we have carefully thought this out so that we don't, you know, we don't have to have any areas in the system that have, you know, a higher, or too high levels of chlorine, which wouldn't be a health problem anyway.
Because of the design of the system, I think some areas just incoming on their tap is just more chlorine, it has more taste of chlorine. But it's the design, I think, of the whole system. That's what I've been told, roughly.
Any other external questions for internal measures? I'm going to pass that over to Brian Macy, Assistant General Manager, but anything else on the external components that I can address for you?
Nope.
No, thank you. Steve, you have any questions?
No ma'am, thank you.
Just very quickly, so everyone understands what we are doing internally. We did send a memo out, a memo out to all staff, basically saying stay home when you're sick, wash your hands, cover your mouth when you cough and sneeze, avoid sick people, clean all surfaces around your office and desk and things of that nature, and we started to encourage even more telephone and video conferencing. Also, what we have done internally, we postponed our all-hands, or our all-hands staff meeting that was scheduled for next week, as well as our employee recognition that was scheduled for April 1st. So unfortunately, some of the things that we like to celebrate here at the district, we just, we just don't feel comfortable doing right now. So those have been postponed. We are going through our emergency response plan with understanding that Ohio and Maryland just closed all of their K-312 schools. There's a good chance that that will happen here, but will that do to our staff now that they have kids at home? So it may be just a longer spring break, but we are preparing for the worst. Obviously, our operators, our customer service staff have to be here to accept payments and also do all the sampling and things like that. So we're going to make sure we have adequate staff to do those services. So we will get back with you with a more detailed plan, but again, you know, this is something that, how many people are going to be impacted with our, our business? And so far, you know, looking at the vacation calendar for what was normally to be spring break, we didn't see that many, see that many issues at that point, but, you know, things may change in a couple of weeks, but we'll be prepared.
Thank you, that was good. Our instructions to the staff is that we will be flexible, and in cases where we need to be, you know, communicate virtually or electronically, we will consider how we can best accomplish that, okay?
Thank you, yes, very good. So now diving into the Public Affairs Report. You guys can go to item 14, but we have switched it up a little bit this month. We do, we did put together a PowerPoint, just so that you can also see the images perhaps a little larger and in color. But it's going to be more or less the same thing that's in the report, but just so you can see it on your screen, so. An oversight on my part, last month, I omitted to mention the January 29th Career Day event at Cabot-Yerksa Elementary School. We did have staff go out and present and talk to their positions. Staff that was present, Dory Petit, Jeff Nutter, Julio Martinez, Juan Hernandez, Emily Boyer. And so, right, let me get this, no, Dory will be my clicker. Thank you, Dory. So from what I hear, it was a really great and fun experience. The kids were rather engaged. So it was awesome that we had some field staff from almost each department, it's a great cross-section of the district, to go and speak to the students. That's perfect, all right, that's great. Little selfie of the staff here. So thank you, Dory and all present, for, you know, reaching out in terms of our public affairs efforts, but providing me with photos too, that never hurts. Next, we have the annual PS Palm Springs Air Museum Gala. That was attended by the majority of the board, including, you know, staff, Brian, Dory, Arden, myself, and then Directors Sewell, Martin, Rasha, Wright as well were present. So what was really fascinating with this, which was kind of cool, the Desert Hot Springs High School...
ROTC.
ROTC, thank you. They greeted individuals on entrance. They would walk them into the cocktail or dining area, but also they were, that was a picture here on the right-hand side of your screen, they did a presentation of colors as well. So it was a great, great event, but also really well represented by our local youth here from Desert Hot Springs. Next, last week, we had the wastewater treatment plant tour by about 15 students, give or take from Cabot-Yerksa Elementary Student Council as well. So this was fun to see. Normally, when we do wastewater treatment plant tours, it's high school students. So these students of the elementary, they were very engaged. They were talking about how cool it was to see the treatment plant in action, and how, I guess, eye-opening and learning about the whole process from your toilet or your sink or your shower. A lot of them expressing like, oh my God, I want to do this. So it was great to see that kind of energy and enthusiasm from our students and our younger students here in Desert Hot Springs. Also, on last week, we had Desert Hot Springs Rotary Annual Big Heart Awards. And so Chris Jacobson was the MSWD Person of the Year for 2019. Dory, you can just kind of go through, there's a few images. So I just tried to compile some of them very quickly. About 22 staff members came out in support of Chris Jacobson, and if you'll indulge me, I just want to name them very quickly. Dory Petit, Oriana Hopper, April Scott, myself, Rita Huber, Arturo Sejha, Danny Friend, Brian Macy, Carol Mormon, Lee Boyer, Basam Al-Samar, Amanda Lucas, President Wright, Directors Duncan, Directors Martin, and Directors Sewell. So I think we definitely had the loudest tables. Chris seemed to receive a standing ovation. I thought it was a very great event in terms also of our public outreach efforts that we're doing here at the district. And then also, before touching on that, Saturday, we also had the Desert Hot Springs Women's Annual Scholarship Luncheon. President Wright, you were in attendance, Directors Duncan, Directors Martin, and myself. And it's great that we were able to sponsor a silent auction basket and also have an ad in the program. So in terms of upcoming events, I know, go back, go back. Senior Inspiration Awards, which was planned for tomorrow, put on by Supervisor Perez's office, was postponed due to the coronavirus. Also, it is a gathering of close to 600 individuals, but also the demographics of that being that it recognizes individuals over the age of 60 for their volunteerism within the valley. Those were reasons for the postponement earlier this week. So as a new date emerges, I will make sure to communicate that with the board, make sure it still fits with everyone's schedule, and keep you informed. Okay, next. MSWD's, we won our third gold medal for Best Tasting Municipal Water in the world last month. So during the staff employee request meeting, we kind of kicked that off with cupcakes, and we had little gold medals on them, little stickers, as a thank you and shout-out to staff for all that they do. And this is a win for all of us, for our community, also for our staff that helps to maintain the system. So just wanted to keep you abreast of also that internal effort that we did to thank the staff.
That was nice. That was good, I think.
Also, March 20th and 27th, through Oriana Hopper Human Resources Office, we did CPR and first aid training. So that in terms of, you know, going in line with our emergency preparedness efforts, not only are we having a tabletop exercise coming up, but we have been CPR and first aid certified. So those are different efforts that staff's been going through. Make sure as emergency response workers, we are all prepared in the event of any circumstance. That's it. Okay, outreach. What you'll also see in your report, per the norm, Alpha Media Social Media Management Report for the month of February, you'll see the report for CD Water Counts. The Water Counts Academy was during the month of February. And that concluded with the tour on February 29th. We went to three different sites, kicking off at Coachella Valley Water District's Wastewater Treatment Plant, then coming out here to Mission Springs Water District's Well Site and Solar Fields. And Basam Al-Samar also acted as an impromptu tour guide. He was also a member of this year's class. And then it concluded with Desert Water Agency's Hydroelectric Plant over in Whitewater. So that was a fun experience, and as curriculum and course gets ready for next February, I'll make sure to bring that back to the board and let you know of our outreach efforts through that initiative as well. Also, in the report, you'll see our digital advertising report for the month of February. We highlighted this past month, our EZ Pay, so our electronic bill pay initiative, and we highlighted the MSWD value of our servant attitude. I just want to give a brief update on the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to make this a standing item every month as well per your request. There is a lunch bunch Friday, May 8th, Mission Lakes Country Club. That's just a networking lunch. The State of the City is coming up May 11th. The next Desert Hot Springs Chamber Board Meeting will be April 7th, and I'll make sure to attend that. I also have a meeting scheduled with Rebecca Rizzo on March 18th to discuss the chamber's initiatives out here in the local Desert Hot Springs region, and how we as MSWD can partner and assure also that our small businesses have the representation that they deserve and do our fair share as community partners with the chamber. Going back quickly to Berkeley Springs, I'm working with Jill on the award ceremony. They have come out '97 and 2004, I believe, and presented us with the awards hanging...
'99.
'99, excuse me, hanging behind the boardroom here. And so I am reaching out to the chamber and the city to see if possibly we can combine with the State of the City and probably try to kick off the State of the City with the huge win for our area. So I'll keep you abreast of that.
When is the State of the City again?
It is Monday, May 11th.
Are we not in Apodaca, hopefully, or?
No, that would be Monday when we get there, yes, upon our return. And then as you'll see, there are bottled water donations for the month of February as well. So I think you've heard enough from me, but I'm open to questions if you have any. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Steve?
No questions, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, monthly reports, item number 15.
Well, not really. I mean, it's nice that we're noting, you know, a lot of new water, I mean, we're even trending a little ahead of last year. The one thing that Danny and I went over today is that you'll notice that our pumping for the month of February was up considerably compared to last year. However, it's pretty reasonable when you look at the previous years and still around the same as, you know, 2013, which is not something I agree with anyway, but, but those were the real numbers. We checked and so it was a phenomenon that I thought was interesting. I don't know if we just had a wetter year time last year or whatever.
Can't explain this period from last year, but it's consistent with the trend as we've seen over the last four months.
Yes. Okay, that's about it. Me, you know, we're really pretty consistent even at the origin plant, so we'll keep maintaining. And I think that was only, the only things I wanted to mention.
Okay, thank you. Number 16, upcoming events and directors reports. Anybody like to do it today?
Could I go Monday?
You can go Monday.
Monday.
Monday, okay. I'll go Monday too then. Director Rasha, do you have any reports? Did you go any?
I don't believe, I don't believe I have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence. A lot of thank you notes. Thank you, everybody, for doing everything for these thank you notes to come in. District Council comments?
Yeah, so just briefly, we will have a closed session today on item B, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 and 4. And it's actually one case involving Mission Springs Water District versus Master Meter. The case number, it's pending in U.S. District Court, Central District, Eastern Division, and the case number is 520CB00332JJHKKX. And the board will be discussing a possible amendment to Mission Springs Water District's complaint at Core Named LP as an additional defendant.
Thank you. Well, we will go into closed session, but we'll finish this part of the agenda. Number 19, General Manager?
Nothing to report. Additional from what you see in the report.
Agenda 10-year already. Ivan, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, I'll get you. You're next. No, okay, you're next, Steve. Go ahead.
Uh, did he say there would be executive session tonight or Monday night?
No, right now. Well, in just a few minutes. Not, not Monday.
Uh-uh.
So just hang...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're in director's comments right now. Director Martin?
Nothing.
No, okay. I have a couple of things here, you guys. Get my notes here. I got that one. Okay, if anybody didn't know this, the, on April 1st, Desert Hot Springs, it's a groundbreaking to the new Desert Hot Springs Library. Yeah, I guess it'll take a couple of years to build, but what I understand, it's really going to be a nice library. And I would like us to, somewhere along the line, to maybe discuss with the library who's ever putting it together and maybe have a little area for water. And then we can, we could put some information. If the kids want to do a report on water, they have something to go look for, something like that down the line. That'll be a while down the line, but that might be fun to do. And this week, by the way, is Groundwater Awareness Week, if anybody is interested, so. Something else I thought I had here. That's not. Okay, that's it. I'm done. So now we'll take a couple-minute break here and we're going to go into closed session and right after the break.